Regular board meeting will begin with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for everybody who showed up here today and for being socially distanced, all five of you. We do have, this meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting school corporation business. It is not considered a public community meeting, there'll be time for public participation as indicated on the agenda. As always, our mission is to educate, empower, and inspire excellence. And all board members were provided background information on the various items on the agenda in preparation of this meeting. The meeting is being livestreamed as always, so hello to all those out there who will be viewing the meeting this evening. We do have public comment forms, if anyone would like to address the board at the appropriate time. The forms are over here by their microphone, please fill out a form and return it to the board table to our board attorney, Mr. Elwood, and we will bring you up at that appropriate time. We'll begin our meeting this evening with a presentation from Dr. Stevens on Rise 3.0 Explained. Dr. Stevens?
I don't know that I would call it a presentation, but the DOE says that each year we must explain the evaluation document to the governing board. So I'm going to explain the little bit that is new this year. Because Rise 3.0 is based basically exactly on the same things that we have used in the past in terms of the rubric that we have used. That has not changed a bit. The difference is, in the past, the Rise document had to have student data informing the evaluation such as SLOs and scores from the, what was then I-Step-Now-I-Learn tests. That is no longer required under House Bill 1002, and thus we took advantage of that. And so now our entire evaluation document will be based on internal data and the evaluation rubric that the principals will use with their teachers and the subsequent conversations that come from that. So just wanted to explain the difference, that we will no longer use the terminology of SLOs or negative, well, I guess we will use it, negative impact if we have to, but we will justify that internally. And we will also not use the school grades in these, in our teacher evaluation forms. And that will make the pies go away that you have heard of before, where some teachers had a certain amount of their rubric, be more informed of their evaluation, where all of them will be 100% of the rubric. So it really empowers our principals to have much more in-depth conversations, and thus we will not have to wait to see what the state scores come back as before we can finalize the evaluations of our teachers. This will help go a long way in the professional development of our teachers, I believe, because we will not have that arbitrary number sometimes that comes back from the DOE. We won't have to wait for that before we have those conversations. So just wanted to officially explain the document to you, since we had to submit that as the newest format of our evaluation program.
Great, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Dr. Stevens on this?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I think we all need to keep in mind that this evaluation tool is basically to support teachers, those teachers that are doing a phenomenal job to continue, and then those teachers that maybe in certain areas might need a little bit more support. And that's what I see this tool as. And I just want to, for teachers to know that, I know that this team, this superintendent and yourself, Dr. Stevens, will do everything you can to make sure that teachers are supported and end up being highly effective, the best it can be. That's my comment.
Great, thank you.
And I do have a question. Aha. Just a quick one. Do you think that moving forward, that this is something that the state will probably allow? Because it does give a lot more local control, I think. If I'm wrong, say I'm wrong.
No, no. No, I totally agree. So we embrace this, because we feel like this is, as you just stated, more local control in our conversations with our teachers. To your point, Mrs. Vasquez, the information that we talk about is then tabulated for all of our, us to see, and then we look for trends in terms of what professional development needs based on our evaluation tool, and then also what areas can we best celebrate. And so this really gives us a common vocabulary to have conversations with our teachers, and it's really based on quality instruction, quality planning, and then professionalism. So those are areas that we can all continue to refine and work on, but it also gives us opportunities to have, you know, real cheerleading situations where we can utilize the strengths of our teachers to help some of our newer employees. And that's a great, that's what we do in many cases, we try to partner people who have demonstrated strength in a certain area with people who are newer to us, so that they can see, one, how to do it like Portage does, but then also, because that is a quality product, how to do it well.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda adjustments. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board? We do have a request for an adjustment from the superintendent to add the girls' golf regional overnight field trip to the new business agenda. Do we have a motion to approve that addition to the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Yeah, the motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to our superintendent's consent agenda, which has our personnel report for September 21st, 2020, the claims report for September 21st, 2020, and the facility use report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second?
We have the motion in a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda, which has our meeting minutes from our special board meeting on bargaining hearing from September 14th, as well as the minutes of our discussion meeting on September the 14th. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, the motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to our board development and committee reports. Does anyone on the board have a committee report for this month, or for this meeting?
Yeah, I would, the Wellness Committee met to have their initial meeting last week. You know, got to meet each other, who's on the committee, gather some information. There's going to be a second meeting scheduled in another month, and then we'll come back and have another report.
Very good, thank you.
I just have a brief, two brief comments about Portage Education Foundation, the Speedway, the new car wash. And just another reminder, this is probably the final reminder, because the special contribution of a dollar, if anyone purchases a Works Car Wash, will be donated to the foundation, and I'm very happy to say that I was there yesterday. And so I encourage everyone who can to support that. Also, masks will be sold by the foundation, but all of the details are being worked out at this time.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a report?
Just a reminder that we have the RDC meeting this Thursday. The 21st Century Tech Grant is on the agenda, and I will let the board members know the outcome of that this Thursday or Friday morning.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to old business. We have our second reading of the NEOLA policies. Attorney Elwood, do we need to vote on these at this time?
Yes, that was the intent.
Very good, thank you. So we have our second reading, do we have a motion to approve the NEOLA policies as listed on the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Again, I know I said it at the last meeting, thank you for the Policy Committee Superintendent Alanez, I know that was a lot of work that you guys put in and a lot of time to update these policies, so thank you for that. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to new business, the approval of the SIP plans, School Improvement Plans. Dr. Alanez?
So attached, you have the documents for each school's final school improvement plan. These plans need to come before the board each school year, and we work collaboratively with the principals to align with also Mrs. Williams, Mr. Lessich for the data components. Dr. Stevens leads this with High Reliability Schools and the implementation of the instructional strategies of Marzano. Our principals utilize things such as parent involvement, other climate and culture initiatives within their schools, reading initiatives, math, and writing. We also look at the demographics of our students and other, our other subgroups of students to analyze that data and make sure that every student has the opportunity to succeed in the classroom setting. With that in mind, I'm excited to share that although you're approving these overall this evening, you will have a glimpse into each principal's individual plan as Dr. Stevens will be having them come before us to review their state of each school. So we will be doing a few of those, so you'll see their goals, you'll see their data, and you'll see a snapshot that's more, got that personal touch and more intimate into what's going on in that specific school. So this is just the formal approval, and you will be presented by each school with their own unique spin on their plans.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the school improvement plans?
I make a motion for the approval of the school improvement plans.
I'll second.
We have the motion, a second, any discussion or comments? Not called roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Next, we have our recommendation to approve the MOU between Portage Township Schools and North Shore Health Centers for Nurse Practitioner for Student Services. Dr. Alanez, would you like to explain, please?
As the boards are aware, when Mrs. Jan Wilson had originally been the Director of Health Services in her tenure with Portage Township Schools and then moved into the North Shore role, she had began the teen clinic here in Portage Township Schools. This was the first site, and no one knows this better than Attorney Elwood as her son. One thing I would just want to mention to all of you, as we've worked to reestablish what that teen clinic's purpose is, to keep our students in school, to keep them healthy, to make sure we're taking care of those wellness exams, and that we're proactive in healthcare for those children. With that in mind, this partnership, as we obviously have with North Shore already, for our employee clinic came about. This would be a memorandum of understanding that moving forward upon Mrs. Olson's retirement and in the interim as we transition, that we would partner with North Shore in the financial obligation as an employee of North Shore. This would be, in particular, a subcontracted position to have a nurse practitioner oversee our health services for the district.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation of the MOU for Portage Township Schools and North Shore Health Centers for the Nurse Practitioner for Student Services?
I make a motion to approve the MOU between PTS and North Shore Health Centers for Nurse Practitioner Services.
I'll second.
We have the motion, a second, any discussion?
Just one question, this is a, is this a one-year agreement? Is this, will we have to revisit this every year?
Yes, this is a one-year contract agreement, and the termination is providing a 60-day written notice.
Okay, thank you so much.
And then it just simply says that the contract extension party shall meet annually to consider and negotiate the extension of the contract. And I just want to add for clarification that this agreement was reviewed by the Indiana School Board Association Attorney Julie Slavens.
Thank you. I'm going to abstain from this vote as an employee of North Shore, so just I'd let everyone know that now.
And I will do the same, since I serve on the board of North Shore.
And I didn't draft or review this agreement since I represent North Shore.
Thank you. It is a great thing, though, I will say that. So with that, call the roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Do I need to?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Abstain.
Trustee Melata.
Abstain.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our acceptance of the formative assessment grant funds. Dr. Alanez?
So the grant was approved in the amount of $75,153.60. Mrs. Williams and the team wrote this grant to support NWEA, the MAP Growth Assessment for Math, Reading, and Language Arts that we use in the district for kindergarten through ninth graders.
Do you have a motion to approve the acceptance of the formative assessment grant funds?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
You have the motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Next, we have our request for approval to advertise for a public hearing for the 2021 budget, tax levies, CPF, and bus replacement plans in Gateway and on the district website. We have a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 budget hearing.
Second?
Motion and second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Next item, our recommendation to approve the Power School Group LLC contract. Dr. Alanez, you explain this, please?
Sure. This is moving from the current APPLI Track system. We're finding it much more efficient in the district, as well as cost-effective in the district, to begin moving much of our programming into large areas of vendor, so that we have seamless transition and our systems speak to each other seamlessly as well. So the applicant tracking system, although I would typically not recommend such a long-term contract, this will go through 2024. However, being that we have worked with Power School for such a significant amount of time and have had much success on their customer support, their implementation of the updated technology in a timely manner as they develop their interface and move forward, we are very pleased with them, so we feel that their product has much to offer us. The contract period, again, is 10/1/2020 to 6/30/2024. This is for their program called the Job Board Application. The cost per year is $7,200 for training and implementation fee of the first year. It is an additional fee of $3,750.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the Power School Group LLC contract?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
We have the motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Next, we have the September 26, 2020, Girls Golf Regional Overnight Field Trip. Dr. Alanez, will you explain that to us? I know there might be some concern about a field trip.
Yes, so at this point in time, what I'm asking for the board to consider is to allow our girls' golf team to attend the regional for their season this year. They will be attending alongside fellow DAC schools. We have followed the same safety procedures and measures. Students will be encouraged to stay with their parents who are attending, and students who do not have a parent to attend will stay in an assigned room with only one other student. They will each have a separate bed. Normally, we do try to have four athletes in a room, and we will have two. So this is a completely optional opportunity for our students to attend, but we felt like with the safety measures and collaborating with our fellow DAC schools, that this plan was something that would allow our girls to still have this important opportunity.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the September 26, 2020, Girls Golf Regional Overnight Field Trip?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
We have the motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
And good luck to our girls. It might be the first time that the golf, the girls' golf team has made regionals, I think, in a long time.
That very well could be.
So congratulations to the young ladies and their coaches. Next, we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Alanez?
Some exciting news today. 10,470 meals were served on 22 buses today. A couple of things I want to share with you on that. The state came through with the waiver to allow us to provide multiple meals at one time, so now we are not doing those daily, it's on Mondays. This is huge, because now that the meals are not to be charged to our families, we felt confident going back to the 10 meals distributed one time a week. We didn't feel that was an appropriate thing to do, knowing that previously our students would have to pay for those meals if they were on reduced or full-pay meals, and we did not want a family to be required to commit to 10 meals in the event that they only needed one or two in a given week. However, now, again, it is back to being without having to charge a fee whether they're free and reduced or not. So today was the first full week, and like I said, 10,470 meals were delivered. I want to share that our bus drivers, our food service employees, they have done a phenomenal job. I also want to mention that Mrs. Anderson and her team in the food service office, I can't thank them enough for their diligence, the amount of preparation, the ordering, the planning, the coolers, that you name it, they really are doing a wonderful job. And something that I think is just over the top, but a typical thing in Portage, they go around to these bus stops twice. In the event that the family can't get there, the first round, they have a second time where they're notified of the opportunity to come back out in the event that they missed the first round. Some families had some difficulties with, you know, little ones at home who might be at naptime, or this is the time that their live session, so we at least did our best to provide that second opportunity on each route. So it's been a great thing. We had over 5,800 individual student responses based on families who completed the survey. We will be, for those, excuse me, for those families who did not complete the survey, they will, as we shared with them, be put into the in-person plan if they did not complete that survey. So just to give you an update on the return to school, so through September 13th, which was the last seven-day rolling average, the current positivity rate in the county is 5.2%. In the event that school were to start tomorrow, September 22nd, my recommendation to the board would be that we would return kindergarten through eighth grade in-person and hybrid for the high school. Now, I am going to continue with my team to monitor these numbers, and in the event, which I anticipate that these go down, now that these are probably the tallies for Labor Day weekend, I'm anticipating bringing back to you next time, if the numbers continue to go down outside of this blip we're having in the radar, that we would come back K-12. So with that in mind, I want to mention that, because we've continued to work with our teachers and employee support staff groups, we just had a call this afternoon at 1:00. We talk virtually every Monday with our teachers regarding the return to in-person learning, and they are prepared for K-12 to re-enter in-person, everyone who signed up to return in-person, but they're also preparing in the event that it's hybrid. They have been extremely flexible. They miss our students, we know our students miss them, and we'll do everything we can to get them in as soon as we can. I also just want to mention that we met with teachers today as well for our weekly tech meeting. I'm really pleased Mr. Di Pasquale and Mr. Lessich assist us with that. We meet with them on Mondays, a representative from each school, during virtual learning, just to listen to their needs, their concerns, share any tips and tricks, just to support them during this time, and then we send those notes out to be distributed amongst all teachers and principals, so the principals can help support that as well. So those meetings continue to go really well for us as well. And then my last item is just my sincere appreciation for all of our phenomenal employees, our transportation department, our drivers and attendants, those gals who have probably ran more routes for buses than I could ever express because of my continuous desire to change how we're going to transport, how we're going to do a hybrid model. They're planning for everything, and they are doing a fantastic job. As I shared with you, food service and all of their hard work, our custodial crew continues to work very hard, our hallways truly look like glass even while they're doing all these extra sanitation and cleaning protocols, they've just always stepped up and continue to do that. Our teachers and our instructional aides working diligently with families, working together with Title I to provide those extra supports, as well as our English language supports for students. Our data and tech team, we couldn't do all this without them, obviously. Our maintenance crew, who just continues to keep everything running and functioning throughout the buildings, our clerical staff. Also, I'm excited, can't wait for October 20th, as we see our wonderful crossing guards back. We miss them, and we can't wait for them to return. Our principals and leadership team as well, and I will tell you, Dr. Stevens has been doing nothing but crunching numbers for this return to school, and who's virtual teaching and who's in-person teaching on top of his regular duties. So my sincere appreciation for Dr. Stevens and all he does to make sure that this is a seamless transition for everyone and working through that data. The last thing I just want to mention is the support and appreciation for our families. I recognize that we asked them to step up in a time that everyone has extra things on their plate while we've been virtual this quarter, and although I recognize there have been struggles and stress, they have been truly supportive and complimentary of the teachers' efforts even while they've been frustrated with just wanting our kids to return. And also, one other sacrifice many families made, we were able to get our bus loads from 72 students to, right now, averaging about 45 students for all the families who opted to transport simply because they had the ability to do so. So again, this is a community effort, and I recognize that that's an extra task on every parent's plate, and it's not really an easy one to pick up, but we really appreciate that, because in the end, those students who have no other way to get to school will get here, and our buses will not be overloaded.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have anything to discuss that's not on our agenda?
I have a question for our superintendent. I think that you said about 12% of the families have decided to continue with virtual learning. Is that correct, or have the numbers changed?
The numbers have changed quite drastically. I wrote down probably everything Dr. Stevens said in our meeting today except for that, so I can get that to the board.
Dr. Stevens, would you mind coming up and telling us?
Okay. I don't want to put him on the spot, just in case.
No, I appreciate that. It ended up being, right now, about 21%.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's great, that'll help.
Yes, it will help.
Yes. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I also, President Melata would like to say, Melata, I'm sorry, would like to say that kudos goes to Linda Williams. As I was looking through the board packet, that, as I was reviewing it, I noticed that in addition to today's grants that we received, the formative assessment, $75,000, a little bit over that, and the CARES of a million, over a million dollars in the GEAR grant, and the Safe School, if my mathematics is correct.
We'll see.
We're over $1,383.290, so over almost $1,400,000 that we received because of the efforts of Mrs. Williams and her staff to not only look for different grants that our district is going to benefit from, but also being successful in receiving those grants. So a special thank you to Mrs. Williams and your staff.
Mrs. Williams, would you mind standing to be recognized?
And as you know, the work just begins once the grant is awarded. The requirements, the reporting, knowing all of those pieces of the compliance. The requirements, the reporting, knowing all of those pieces of the compliance, the auditing, the working with finance, it is a, it is a very large task. It's, it's a good thing to celebrate, and then the hard work starts, but our team does really do a good job, and Mrs. Williams is definitely a huge asset for us.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Anybody else have any comments?
Just wanted to, again, say thank you to Dr. Alanaz and our team for their diligent efforts through all of this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Elwood, did we get any public comment forums?
We did not.
Okay. So just moving on, our next regular board meeting and discussion meeting will be October 12th. We do have, for the board, the building and grounds tour is tomorrow at 4:30, and then we, those who will be attending, we have the Indiana State School Board Association Fall Conference, which we'll be doing virtually. And Dr. Alanaz, I'd like to talk to you about how we do that, maybe I'll give you a call tomorrow.
That sounds good.
See if we can put something together.
Sure.
Maybe we can do that together as a group. So if nobody has anything else, meeting adjourned, thank you.